Ready, sir?
Just about.
Okay, welcome back, everybody. Today is March 1st. This is our afternoon session. First item of my department agenda is a public hearing. This is an action item. This is Resolution 21-07. Vacation of utility and access easement on Ashton Ridge. At this time, I'll ask the committee commissioners if they have any expartee or conflict of interest.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not either. So at this time, the way this will work is I will open up the public hearing, and we'll get a staff report from Sinda. If there's any questions for Sinda, if not, we'll move it into testimony of proponents, testimony of uncommitted, testimony of opponents. And then at that time, we will ask for questions. I'm assuming that the applicant can be on the line.
Yes.
We'll have rebuttal by the applicant or any questions. We'll close the public hearing after that, and then we'll move to our decision from there. So at this time, I will turn it over to DG Director Sinda here.
Okay, the staff reports of vacation application 20-03 vacation of utility and ingress egress easements. The applicant is Rob Grunske. The owner is JJS Southwest LLC. The property is located in Ashton Ridge Ranch subdivision Phase 2, lots 8 and 9. And those are the ones up here in orange, yellow, whatever this is. And then this is where the shared driveway comes through here. Currently, lots 8 and 9 are accessed from Ashton Ridge Place, a private road. If the vacations are approved, the property where the shared driveway is located would be transferred to the adjacent lots 5 and 6. Lots 8 and 9 would then be accessed from Sweet Iron Court, a private road.
Where is Sweet Iron on that?
Right here.
That blue line?
Right here. And so they'll gain access here instead of having to come down here and then use a shared driveway like this. Okay? But when this was originally platted, they didn't have access from Sweet Iron Court. This is actually the Willows subdivision that they'll be accessing through right here. This is the Willows. Sweet Iron Court, and they'll get access here. This is going to be vacated, and each flagpole will be then deeded to the adjacent property owners so that they will no longer have access back to Ashton Lane.
So it seems like there's a creek or something going right down the middle of that?
Mm-hmm. That's over here. That's not in this subdivision. Yeah, and then they won't have to cross all this floodplain stuff.
And they have full approval from the Sweet Iron Court?
Yes. Yes. So I'll continue through here, and that might answer some of those questions. At a property notice public hearing on January 14th, 2021, the Valley County Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the proposed vacation, and those were written in your facts and conclusions as attached. Legal notice was posted in the Star News on February 4th and February 11th. Potentially affected agencies were notified on January 29th. Neighbors within 300 feet of Ashton Ridge Ranch subdivision Phase 2, lots 8 and 9, were notified by a fact sheet mailed on January 29th. The site was posted on February 22nd, and the application notes were posted on the Valley County website on January 29th. Agency comments received. Central District Health stated that approved rainfall locations are located in the southwest corner of each of these lots adjacent to Sweet Iron Court. Access to these lots must not impact the approved rainfall locations. Idaho Power Company's review indicated that there are no facilities within the easement area. Therefore, Idaho Power agrees to relinquish their interest while not restricting the 12-foot public utility easement that lies adjacent to Ashton Ridge Place Road. Idaho Department of Environmental Quality provided general comments on air quality, wastewater, drinking water, surface water, hazardous waste, and groundwater contamination. Garrett DeYoung, McCall Fire and EMS Fire Chief, has no comments other than the properties be readdressed from Sweet Iron Court. Neighbor comments received. Chad and Amy Gunn, owners of Ashton Ridge Ranch Lot 3, support the vacation. I listed the various parts of the ordinance here for your review as it pertains to vacations. It states the commission shall review the proposed vacation with regard to future development of the neighborhood. The commission should also take into consideration the interests of adjacent property owners of utilities and of various public agencies who are pertinent to the application. In summary, the board needs to determine if the future development of the subdivision would be inhibited by the vacation of the access and utility easements. Deeds will need to be created in order to transfer the flagpoles to adjoining properties, lots 5 and 6, and then recommend ingress and egress and utility easements are recorded for access to lots 8 and 9 prior to recordation of the vacation and deeds. So we need to make sure that they have the access on Sweet Iron Court before they record the deeds for the the vacation and then the deeding the property over to 5 and 6. Along with this, I prepared a resolution number 2107, Declaration of Vacation of a Platted Utility and Ingress Egress Easement in Ashton Ridge Ranch Phase 2. Whereas the current action is to vacate the ingress and egress and utility easement that is also the shared driveway running between lots 5 and 6 in Ashton Ridge Ranch subdivision within lots 8 and 9 as platted in Ashton Ridge Ranch subdivision Phase 2 instrument 333470, to split this area from lots 8 and 9 in Ashton Ridge subdivision Phase 2, deed the split area to lots 5 and 6 in Ashton Ridge subdivision, and to retain the utility easements on the front property along all roads as requested by Idaho Power. Whereas Ashton Ridge Ranch subdivision Phase 2 was plotted at Book 12, page 24. Ashton Ridge Ranch subdivision was plotted at Book 11, page 8. Whereas it has been determined the vacation of the ingress egress and utility easement that is also the shared driveway shall not inhibit future development of the neighborhood. Therefore, the Board of County Commissioners hereby vacate the ingress egress and utility easement that is also the shared driveway running between lots 5 and 6 in Ashton Ridge Ranch subdivisions within lots 8 and 9 as platted in Ashton Ridge Ranch subdivision Phase 2 as shown on the attached plat. Retain the utility easements on the front property lines along the platted road as requested by Idaho Power and authorize determined to sign this resolution. This vacation will be effective upon recordation of the deeds to lots 5 and 6 in Ashton Ridge subdivision and access easement is being provided to lots 8 and 9 in Ashton Ridge subdivision Phase 2 on Sweet Iron Court. And that ends my staff report.
Nicely done. I have a few questions, though. The two lots that we're talking about, do they have access to power line on the other side? I mean, how does power come in?
Down Sweet Iron Court.
So there is, do they need an easement or access or anything for that?
There's a utility easement that runs along the front of all these lots.
And my other question is, if you go on down to the bottom of the picture, that gray colored trunk right there, how do those people, it looks like a road coming up to the bottom, go and clear up to that cul-de-sac on Ashton? Is that a road or is that just a property line?
This here?
Yep, just through the right of your head, I see that road.
That's just a driveway.
So they have access to down south, I think?
No, it looks like it comes off this cul-de-sac right here.
Do they have an easement through there?
That's, hang on, that's that's the Willows Phase 1 Lot 9. That is actually coming, access from down here. This is a different subdivision.
We're not giving anybody landlocked there?
No. That just looks like some old driveway going in and up through there. There we go. Yeah, what we're looking at is this one here.
Okay, any more questions for staff?
The question I have is once we do something like this, is there an amendment or anything that is filed along with the original CCNRs? So people can see that we've changed what the original?
I don't mess with the CCNRs. It's, this vacation, the reason we do this declaration of vacation is it is then on the official plat for that subdivision.
So it's attached to the plat?
Yes.
Okay.
And if anybody, I mean, if a title company does a search, they're going to find this.
Any more questions for Sinda? No, no, I don't want to. Can you testify your proponents? Do we have anybody on the phone?
Did we dial in?
Oh, we did.
Yeah, just the applicant, Rob Grunske.
Oh, okay. This time we're taking testimony of your proponents. Do you want to say anything or anything?
No, just that that gray road you're talking about is just an old ATV road. It's not really an access road to any lot.
Hey, is there?
And then, oh, sorry. I also heard about CCNRs. Both communities are amending their CCNRs, subject to approval of this transaction.
Okay, is that all?
Got it?
Okay, is there anyone else on the phone or in the audience who's a proponent of this? Until I get to them, one down, is there anyone in the audience or on the phone that is uncommitted and wants to testify? Let the record show there was none. Is there anybody on the phone or in the audience that is? Please let the record show there was none. So since we don't have any opponents, do I need to take rebuttal or anything else? I'm going to close the hearing, public hearing at 1:12 and begin deliberations.
No problems with that.
Seems like an ETP, you send a sentence, you have a motion to make.
Did I do a motion?
You did. I have a budget.
Oh, yes, I did.
I'll make a motion that we approve vacation application number 20-03, vacation ingress egress and utility easement to Ashton Ridge Ranch subdivision Phase 2 as presented the application described. Resolution 21-07, except the planning and zoning commission backs it.
I'll second.
Moving to the second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Done deal. Thanks, Rob.
Thank you so much.
Is it 80 degrees out? I don't want to hear from anybody until it's 80 degrees outside. I sat on my back patio yesterday, though. Sun was coming in, it was nice. Yeah. Or, no, Saturday, not yesterday. Saturday was sunny.
Okay, at this time, we have, our next action item is at 1:30, so we got about 16 minutes where we can move on here.
This is just a mess up here.
I actually put a keyboard there this morning because I brought my own. Tell Jeremy about, would you ever have needed a keyboard? It'd be easier to use a keyboard on that.
It's always easier.
There is a keyboard there. You do have to turn it on and off. But it should have everything hooked up to it.
Mouse wasn't. I did prepare the resolution. Huh?
And included it in the email to, oh, that's the resolution, I guess.
I thought I had attached that. Did I send you all the resolution?
It was in the staff report.
You're always like, first thing I list. Okay. Thank you.
It's yours now.
Okay. How do you operate this?
I don't know. Can we put in? I don't know that we're supposed to put in outside device.
This is not, this is an inside device. It's a secure.
Wouldn't matter. That one's not connected to the network. So as long as we're not connected to the network, it's fine.
I just turned it off. You need the mouse? Because I just plugged the mouse back in soon.
Is that the mouse?
Come on. I think you have to let it reheat before you put anything in it. Public. It's public. It's a password.
It's public. Yeah, all lowercase. Yes. Got it?
Yep, thank you.
I want a drone.
This is only here as far away from this place.
We got about nine more minutes. I want to trigger nails.
Nah, it's all right. I already worn them down.
You already worn them down?
Yeah. I know, it's been a while.
I tell you, thanks for helping my mom last year.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
Ninety years, old, ninety-one, whatever she was, that's pretty amazing.
It's a long life.
It's really don't need to buy me a drone. Be fun, but you know.
I have a drone. Really good drone, too.
It is.
I've heard your cows with a drone. Most of the time I get weeds in my field, and then I mark them on the map. But that's where I spray.
Nice.
That's what, yeah, I found that out last week when I was asking around different places. And one of the things that Steve Anderson said was, "Yeah, we could actually tell where the weeds come up at and where to spray at." I didn't think about that.
Well, my mind, I can't tie it in, I can't tie it in my strayering so that I can go back and forth and not overlap. You know, it's lined up. I can't tie it into that to say, okay, turn the strayers on when I get to this patch of weeds. I have to be there physically. Turn it on, flip it on, okay, I'm through.
Oh, that's true. What kind of drone is it?
I'm trying to say Unisys.
I don't know that.
Pretty big.
Is it like a hexcopter or a quadcopter? I bet it's got a 1-inch sensor.
Jeff, why did you move over there? Now you're all on the same side of the room with your drone. Oh.
This building and stuff, or like a school, like a situation where it was active. If he knocked out the cameras, we could get something in there that small and maneuver it around, at least tell where it's at.
He puts it in the room and then it does something where it keeps from crashing. It protects itself once you get in there. So you tell it to do a full sweep or half sweep or whatever. Just a little tiny thing, so if you do crash, it's.
It's not a big loss, right?
I'll bet he's, I don't know, a quarter mile up there.
Do you have an FAA license?
About 500 feet, you're supposed to be. What's really fun is hawks out in the field, they'll start attacking. They'll come in and see that, the crows will attack. You know, suddenly you got this big bird right in front of you.
It's true.
I was curious about this stuff that just sold that was divorced property right underneath that airport aviation guidelines or whatever. Wonder if there's anything written in all of that stuff that you cannot use drones in this whole area? Should be somewhere.
Yeah, it was Michigan, they had a ball, we go through Valley County.
I saw that.
I don't remember what they were serving at, something to do with.
Yeah, I saw that.
Took a drone down. Yeah, the one I saw, just yesterday, it was a shark came in on a bunch of scoot divers and grabbed their cameras, took off in his mouth, and they lost. I gave out my camera, I stood in my arm.
Yeah, that's something they shove in his mouth, for sure.
Couple counties are starting to use drones to spray their noxious weed program. Get big enough, they can carry a heavy enough load, they can actually hit a round up, not have to go back and back to the ground square.
We have five more minutes.
Yeah, that's. I got some, I got a few situations out there I could have used it, but I got one of them. It came about because of Larry Mangum was losing his pilot, and they've had, they've had to use other agencies' drones, and they've used one that, it was like a search and rescue member had his own. He had a license, and they had used it on a couple of things. And I think it, they couldn't find a guy in the river, and I'll let him tell it. He couldn't find a guy in the river, and they overflowed, and there he was, sitting in the river. Because they'd gone back and forth, they couldn't see him just because of that angle, which is.
Yeah, and you know, the technology, you know, it doesn't double since I went. I mean, they're just using. With goggles. You look, that's where it goes. Wow. Where is it, you know?
I know. I'm glad it's got that stabilization on it, because I've tried flying mine without it. And it's definitely a little trickier.
I think if I get used to mine, they don't fly mine over any kind of blubber.
That is.
You know, aerial perspective, when you see cars working down the road. Number boats tied up now.
Yeah, we can just get another, see what we're doing there, too, and something else we can talk.
Where at? Oh, yeah.
I should, we had 187 cars. They were clear around them on the gravel pit. There was a lot of bikinis, that was the best part.
Doug, can you back off that camera for just a minute? There's your ass, bro. You just did. It's so nice having a nice camera in here. Can actually see things and nice projector.
Yeah, that's working out really well.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to move on to our next item. This is under agenda, this is an action item. This is a request from Valley County Rescue Rescue to utilize Title III funds to purchase equipment. So I'm assuming you're prepared to answer. Go ahead.
So thanks for letting me with the presentation. And I'll explain to you that I'm up here, and I'll give you my stories as a law enforcement officer, but I'm up here as kind of a spokesman for the group of people that I've come to contact and where this program would be beneficial. I do have my FAA 14 CFR Part 107 license. I've had it since 2017. I'm not by any means an expert in all fields of drone, but I have a passion and a hobby for it. Personally, I'm a photographer, and I use it for that kind of stuff. And the law enforcement side just gives me another angle that I feel is beneficial. But there's, as we were talking about just saying, there's more angles than just law enforcement that it benefits, and I'm finding that out little by little. So I gotta give you a packet. The packet includes the presentation of PowerPoint slides that I'm going to go through. I'm going to hit them kind of quick. And it also includes a working draft of the policy that would be in place for the program. It's more specifically designed for the sheriff's office because where that came from was ICRA sent that to me. And it's a Pocatello policy that they implemented with Pocatello, ICRA. So he sent that to me, and it's kind of a working draft that we're going to model. And the third thing is kind of just a rough overview of the costs and how it's laid out. And there might be, the only thing in there I think I've missed is the actual testing fee to, when you get your certification for your pilot slides, you have to go and test. But that's changing, and that process is kind of changing a little bit. So I didn't include that. So kind of what I'm going to do is just hit the the three things that we'll cover are the benefits of a UAS, which is unmanned aerial system or air crash system to Valley County, a startup cost, and steps for UAS, and the myths and facts about UAS. Benefit of, to the county would be, first and foremost, would be public safety. I think preserving life is a paramount thing. Search and rescue and law enforcement officers would cover it. I'm gonna hit the, the law enforcement incidents right now and I kind of touched on it a second ago when we were just talking. The things that we could use it for as a law enforcement officer would be like crime scene investigations, um, crash scene investigations. Any kind of critical incident where we have to deploy people into a situation that I need eyes on in advance. And, and the story to go along with it is we've had a couple, a few incidences, you know, the last couple of years where we've had to deploy and we've had guys in standoffs in situations such as that. Me sitting back at our, our IC, IC or incident command post, I would love to have had eyes on knowing my deputies were fixing to go into something that I could, we couldn't physically see. But put an overhead view of something that would give them a live action shot of what they're fixing to go into would ease my stomach a lot because it's really tense for me to actually have to sense my end. I wanna be the one to go in first and that's just my perspective, but I can't. But if I could get that aerial perspective and have them a little bit more intel before we go into something, it would ease me, my mindset a whole lot. Another incident, just me personally, we were up in West Mountain probably about a month ago. Some, uh, some builders, they, they got in a bad way and they were on the phone and the guy's like, I, I just can't do this, I can't get out. We knew where he was from nine one one, but when myself and Joe McCaroney got up to the top of the mountain, it was a matter of trying to pinpoint them exactly where they were. And we drove back and forth for an hour hitting our horn and everything. These guys were having a hard time just because they were off in a bowl. The sound wasn't carrying very well. If I'd had a pot, I call them a pocket drone, which is what we were gonna get. Basically, I'd just deploy and send it up. It's got the thermal you were talking about. And I could have spotted them and had them out a lot sooner, so we spent a lot of time wasted trying to find them. So that was just another incident. Um, I gotta kind of switch gears and, and let, uh, Larry Mangum kind of give you a search and rescue perspective instead of me giving it to you.
For, for Valley County, Larry Mangum, captain of Valley County Search and Rescue, if somebody remembers who I am or knows who I am. Anyway, from the search and rescue standpoint, we've had a couple of instances, I mean, that we've used it on, I mean, basically every one depending on our situation, we could use one. But our biggest one, we learned the lesson on was the, the guy down here on Highway fifty-five at the splash dams. Stopped, parked his car, walked in the river. We could see the river, the river was open, no ice on the river or anything. We had teams up on both sides looking into the river. We couldn't see anything. Of course, this all happened ten o'clock at night. We went till midnight that night, the first night, next morning we were in there at eight o'clock at daylight. Searched again, still couldn't see anything. We called our friends down at Idaho Mountain Search and Rescue who have a drone. They brought the drone up here, they flew I wanna say four flights up and down the river in various widths of the river and whatnot, and then we were taking the footage cause the guy was watching it in his goggles as he was flying it and he had all these numbers up on one side of the flight and fast and height and everything. And we were taking him inside to our command trainer and running him through our computer, putting him on a TV screen. And, and then we had two guys in there watching these videos after he would do that. That's how we ended up finding the guy laying face down in the river that day. And then we were able to get the fire department out there to go in and, and pick him up. But, uh, it's been valuable. Uh, Blue Lake search up here, we did that one last summer. Uh, we knew the girl was in the area. Didn't know exactly where. We'd found some stuff from her that, that the family claimed to be hers and whatnot. We brought a drone in from, uh, IMSU again. It's like you say, we have to bring all ours in from outside because we don't have have one ourselves, but we brought it in from IMSU. We were able to see the bottom of Blue Lake by them flying from the top down. So they're a very useful tool for us at search and rescue and that's why we've decided kind of to join with law enforcement in the use of one and whatnot, so. I'll let you continue and then we get to the end.
Larry, a question. So on the search like at Blue Lake or them coming in, is there a cost to the county to do that?
There is a cost to the county to do that and it's like you say, through search and rescue, as long as we're activated and stuff like that. Uh, what that cost is, we turn it in on our search, search and rescue reimbursement reports, which go through the sheriff's department and then it's turned over to the state and the state absorbs all those costs. Okay, for that. And the same thing would happen here for, and, and what we figure is we've talked about that would go into the maintenance fund for the drone. I mean, cause there's always gonna be something that's needed.
Larry, I got a question for you. If you put up a drone during search and rescue, can you charge that by the hour or is it per incident or how do you do that?
It's, it's general, what we've done in the past is they bill us by the hour. And I wanna say it's a hundred and thirty an hour is what it is. They bill us by the hour, we get an invoice from them and then we attach it to the search and rescue report and whatnot. The sheriff approves and it's like I say, we just pull it back into our funds to use for that drone. We've had a, a person on our search and rescue unit that has a personal drone, very similar to the one we're looking at that we've been using, okay? But he's now moving out of the area. Okay, and the one thing with the drone, I, I don't wanna jump ahead for Brandon here, but but we've, we've been looking at this for quite some time, so we put in a year ago to the Donley City Lot Tax Grant Fund to get funding and they awarded us twenty-five hundred dollars. Okay? So that's why we, we started talking about this and the captain got with me and we discussed it some more, so we do have twenty-five hundred dollars to put towards the purchase of this drone. To help out, so, okay?
So you got kind of the law enforcement, search and rescue. I, like I said, I went around last week and I talked to Jeff McFadden with the, the road department and he just this was, I made this before, but you know, I was looking at, you know, what the benefits would be for county projects with site damage assessments, routine inspections and project orientation and progression. Um, but he was giving me way more information to go along with that, so I'm like, okay. I would rather, uh, you, you presented than me, since you're the road guy, I was gonna let you explain to me.
Jeff likes the microphone.
Uh, yeah, so he came down. The more I got into it, the more like Brandon said, more and more things started popping up in my head. We could use it for this, we'd use it for that. Weed department can use it. There's a lot of other weed districts, departments in, around us that use drones. You get an aerial shot from five hundred feet up of a a group of weeds that you have bugs out on. Cause we, we have some like leafy spurge. We've gotten some bio bio control, little bugs that eat the plants. It's really hard to get out there and walk around this every year to kind of see if it's shrinking or if it's growing. If we had a drone, we'd go to the exact spot every year. Take a picture from the same elevation, measure it and go, hey, it's working. No, it's not. We get, I mean, we have some fields around south of town right here that nap weed's growing exponentially. How much a year it's growing? I don't know. But if we had an aerial shot, we could have a really, really good idea of how fast this is growing. Go back to the landowners to, hey, you're you know, we're losing, you're losing a half acre of grazing every year because you're not doing what you're supposed to do. Might give us a little leverage. Um, bridge inspections, there's other, a lot of road and bridge departments in Idaho and I'm sure elsewhere that you can't get underneath these big bridges unless you got one of those backwards boomed bridge inspection trucks, which we don't. ITD does most of ours every two years, but I've got bridges that are under twenty feet long in the back country that are too high to climb under with a ladder to inspect. We could fly this thing underneath there and, you know, take a look, take some pictures. Coverts, big coverts that are you can't crawl through because they got water in them. Get a good enough pilot, I guess you could fly a drone inside the covert and look at it. I don't know. Is that possible?
Fly the e-sport right now, look how bad that slide is.
Yeah, I mean, to, to get an aerial photo, I mean, you know, luckily it was Midas at the time that took aerial pictures of the big slide in twenty nineteen and boy, it was an eye opener. Just walking over the top of it and looking at it was big, but boy, from that thousand foot drone shot, it's like, holy smokes. So, yeah, we could use that in the road department, the weed department. Not saying it'd be used once a week or once a month, but even a few times a year would save us some money than having to hire somebody to come up with their drone like these guys do to, hey, can you fly underneath this bridge? Cause I I know there's something going on underneath there, but I can't get to it. So it's kind of where we're at. And I can watch my employees too.
And again, that's on tape. I think that's an HR violation, Jeff.
Can you make the poll surveys with the drone? I said, can you do poll surveys with the drone?
I could, I could, instead of going out and beating, beating my pickup dead.
Good one. I like that one.
So you, you kind of touched on with the avalanche thing, that was one of the things that being able to assess avalanches is to get in and tell how much you got cleaned up or how far it's gonna go.
Sergeant and commissioners, I apologize to burst everyone bubbles, but my understanding was initially that it was gonna be Valley County Search and Rescue requesting Title III funds to purchase uh, equipment. What I'm hearing now is there's also the possibility of Valley County Sheriff's Office utilizing it, the road department utilizing it. The concern that I have is if Title III funds are being used to purchase this device, only search and rescue would be able to use this, uh, device for search and rescue operations on forest service ground. So there's a couple of things going on here that there's, there's a request I hear from Valley County Search and Rescue, but also potentially the county. Not saying that it can't be done, but a different funding source would have to be identified to be able to then allow road department to use it, the sheriff's office to use it for different operations uh, and other, um, departments, other agencies within Valley County. So we just have to be clear that what we're proposing today is just to utilize Title III to be used for search and rescue operations. And I apologize if I wasn't clear when this was approached.
Okay. The only thing I can say to that is I, I don't have that knowledge of funding. I'm kind of just, uh, just looking for the So I, if, if it's, if it's something that I need to research for you, I can do that or I, I just don't know how to.
No, i- it would just be a um, no, there, there is other funding mechanisms that we, the county can utilize to purchase. I, I don't know now if we're identifying that there's a possibility that we need two, uh, on, two drones, for lack of terms. One for search and rescue and one for the county to utilize, uh, for other types of business. Um, but if we're going to be using Title III funding for this, it can only be used on forest service grounds or search and rescue operations. So what I'm hearing is though, that there's also an additional request being made. So we just have to be, be clear that today what is on the agenda is to utilize Title III for
Search and Rescue.
For search and rescue.
Search and rescue funds, yeah. That's what I'm saying, we're, we're at a point, commissioners. We're at a point, it's like I say, we've got the twenty, the twenty-five hundred dollars from the lot, the lot tax grants that we've got to spend within a year. And, and this is the drone that we're looking at and that's how come we approach it, cause we're looking for the funding to come up with the balance.
And what would be that balance, Larry?
Last page of the thing. So that's the balance we're looking at, coming up with it and we don't have it in our funding. If, if we could find another money source, and that's why I'm saying we had access to it, yes, we would still be willing to put forth funding towards it. Yes. That's why I say, and that's why I wanted to get up, cause I understand Doug's the Title III funds and I didn't think about that before Doug brought that to my attention, so yeah. But yeah, we just, we've gotta come up with it and we just got a timeframe of a year. Or we lose those.
So what I'm hearing and what the commissioners are hearing is that Valley County Search and Rescue is wanting to potentially collaborate with Valley County on purchasing one device that can be used for search and rescue operations as well as county operations.
I'm, that's what I'm saying, I'm gonna leave it, I'm gonna come, as far as search and rescue, we, we're looking for a drone for search and rescue. Okay, we approached these guys for another funding source. And, and I know they do search and rescue as well as their other stuff. But if we need to pull it back to search and rescue, I say we pull it back to search and rescue.
I agree with you, Larry. I think there's a lot of difference here. One of the things that's important to realize this has got the thermal energy on it. What's your name? Jeff might use or Steve might use, it's not gonna have a thermal energy, so there's big savings there.
Right.
But what I think you guys are gonna find out is this is so cool that we would like to get one for the county and for the sheriff's department.
Which would need to go through the budgeting process.
Yeah, and that's why I say, I didn't think about that, so, but that's why I'm saying, we, we do, we've got a year to come up with something for search and rescue to spend our funds. Or we, you know, it's like you say, we lose them. So, and that's why I say, this is the drone we propose, so if we could pull it back to just strictly search and rescue between us and the sheriff's department.
Well, and I think, you know, in my case, when I bought mine, I spent more time searching and rescuing the drone and I did actually use it until I got good. There's gonna be a little walkway involved with this one as well.
Yeah, and that's why I'm saying, and, and the one we're looking at, it's like I say, that, that we've kind of went back and forth with Brandon and sheriff's department with this is one that's, that's backpackable. So we can load it in a backpack and pack it up to these avalanche areas in the back country and, and do the overhead to see what we've got. And stuff like that. And that's why we, I mean, it's like I say, we've had a member that's had a small one and we've utilized it just about on every search we've been on.
Well, I can't imagine. And I don't think it's good joint use anyway, because if you're, if you have search come up, it's an immediate need and we don't want it to be out in the back country with Jeff and you need it. So to me, that's not a, a good use, you know, across the county anyway.
Okay. Yeah, if we could just pull it back to search and rescue.
I think, let's just go that direction for now and then we'll kind of see how it goes down the road. Part one for you guys in the road department. You guys, we could play it a little bit, if you're out there, realize the capabilities in these things. Cause they are pretty cool.
And you, you, you're the licensed pilot too, so you would still be working with them. I would work with him for now and then he's, uh, working on getting another pilot, which would entail having to go through that course and, but I believe, you said she was a private pilot already, so. They already, that, that's half the things. Private pilots already been through months, they're just probably just gonna learn the specifics and take the tests.
Well, I'm not the smartest cookie in the cookie box, so I did learn how to fly mines, so anybody can learn how to do it, if you have problems. It's a whole bunch of weird things in the world. Ken, go ahead. Anything else you wanna ask?
I, I wrote, I got down some PowerPoint about missing facts and you have a presentation and you can see those and
That immediately came to mind. I mean, right now there's a distrust of government and you got a drone in the sky with a police officer around it, people are gonna be going, wait a minute, where's my privacy, you know? We'd have to be very, very cognizant.
So the one thing I would like to point out with that, and you're right, there are public concerns and I totally understand those. Because I try to defend people's rights, that's what I, it's kind of my job, so. Idaho has come up with a law, it's twenty-one, two thirteen, I believe. It outlines what circumstances that can, can actually use the drone in. Emergency or accident circumstances is one. And then the other one is, you have to have a warrant or consent. Those are the two, those are the two factors that you would have to have. If you're gonna specifically target somebody's personal property, that's what you're gonna have to The, the other thing is, the policy that, the draft policy in there, ICRMP, like I said, they're the ones that sent that to me and I, I looked it over. It's pretty thorough and, you know, how it's laid out, the conditions you can use under. And the final thing I'll say about it is we, we would use it in the law enforcement. You know, it's purely a reactive, a proactive measure to a reactive situation. So it's specifically designed missions are what it's for. It's not for arbitrarily going out and surveilling people and, and tracking people's cars. The battery capability on this thing isn't capable of doing that for any length of time. Right now, technology's getting better, but right now it's not, it's not, we wouldn't do that anyway, so. Those are the areas of concern that I kind of wanted to point out to you that I understand and, and they are addressed.
Well, I know before my wife retired last fall, she was realtor, that there was two different guys that came up here and they contracted to fly with a drone and take pictures of a house. And they had to get the consent form from the owner. They use that in their real estate advertising, they fly with that drone around their house. And they're really bothered, so it's coming. Okay? Anybody else have any other questions for here? Are we all good? Anybody else have any questions for you here? Are we all good?
So what is the long term? So if you buy a drone, uh, there's got to be annual maintenance costs, insurance costs. All of that is covered through your department? Or is this an ongoing request for funding?
Well, I guess to answer your question from our standpoint is that's why as we use it for search and rescue, we will bill basically the state. And so all those fundings come back into our pot, basically. And then anything that's needed, the way we set up our our accounting and whatnot within search and rescue is equipment. And so therefore, anything that needed new batteries, uh, propellers or anything, you know, that it needed to fund itself would come from our funding.
What's the range on the one that we're looking at for you guys?
It's
So you you really don't want to go beyond visual on a site? That's that's typically how you want to do it. I this is the one that we're fixing to, the one that we're looking at is called the DJI Enterprise Advance. It actually comes out this month. So actual what they claim and testing is two different things. And I watch drones uh, looking for what a company claims, because they'll claim battery life to such an extent. And then what people actually do, you can go on YouTube and watch those. Um, but typically you don't want to go beyond visual on a site and and that may, that means you maintain a higher altitude and and you don't get down low unless it's just like, so I've seen typical DJI products go a couple of miles. But that's really stretching. Three mile visual on a site is what you would want, but I wouldn't go that far. Based on the circumstances, the terrain and everything and the weather. The the other thing to answer your your question you had about maintenance. So each manufacturer outlines a maintenance schedule for their drones. And part of the protocols and procedures that would be in there in the working draft, we take the list that they opt, they they recommend. And then at some point in time, if you have to send it back to the manufacturer for an overhaul or like a year maintenance, you can do that. But that is covered in what Larry was talking about.
Just don't want to buy something that we don't think about long-term consequences of adding additional cost to the counties.
What's the lifespan when you get it?
Well, I was, I can only go with my experience, but I've had my, it's a unique H520. It's a commercial helicopter drone. I've had it for three years and if I keep the maintenance up on it, I keep it in good condition. And as long as you take care of it, I've had it working for three years now. So actually four, so since 2017. So it 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 depends on how good you treat it.
Don't want to get it wet.
How good your pilot is.
I would suggest you guys get a couple of sets of low noise propellers. I just got one set. That's what usually gets tore up on. Just propellers break off when you land. It's a sticker or sucks up a tree or something to it. Okay, everybody good? So I'll make the motion then that we expend $5,500 from Title III funds for the search and rescue to purchase a drone.
Second man.
Okay, no need to say anymore discussion. Everybody good? All favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Doug has a question. So how do you, how do you differentiate when you're doing search and rescue that's not on forest service land? If it has to be on forest service?
Should not, I would say most of everything we do is on forest service land. So I mean, but uh, it would be pretty easy within our search. I mean, we can see it with it. You can see it within our search reports.
Okay.
So we would have some information that would come back that we can feedback to you guys to see how many missions it was deployed on and whatnot.
We may have to have that for accounting purposes.
When we get audited, when we use those funds, it's always a possibility that we would get audited, how this is being utilized. So I think we just have to be prepared to make sure that we are in fact showing how we're using the equipment on forest service. Might be a good argument for you guys to have one as well, that we can use in the valley floor and not forest service lands.
You know, just thinking about river rescue, that probably would not have.
That's what I say. I don't think on the corridor there it possibly would have. I know Blue Lakes and and Sully Meadows would deploy one of the things you it would have there. But yeah, I agree 100% on that. But there would have been no way we would have found that guy at me the search and rescue mission. But but yeah, I found that guy in the river. Had we have not had that. But I appreciate it. More of us keep track, but we have our search reports to to feed you the information in case of an audit.
All right, commissioners, I think this wasn't the only request that I believe was going to be made by Valley County Search and Rescue. When this was brought to my attention, it was actually a different item. Oh, that was it.
That's what I thought too.
Yeah.
Got your drone. What else you got?
Well, I'll jump in here. Valley County Search and Rescue, we bought a UTV several years ago. I don't know whether the commissioner remember that. We bought the old one from sheriff's department when they were selling the upgrade to their new one. We purchased that and it's it's been good to us. We put some money into it here and there, whatnot. And it's been a good UTV for us until recently. And it's a 2011 uh, Polaris Ranger UTV that we purchased from the sheriff's department. And recently we were out to a stib night on a search for a hunter, missing hunter in Dewey Meadows. We deployed it. They got uh, partway there and it started missing and carrying on. So we pulled it out of service at that time and uh, we've elected a search and rescue not to put any more money into it because of its age. Okay? So we're looking at a new UTV and moving up to a four seater because that's really what we we need is something that we can move people with. And not just a single seater, three seater. And so that's what we've been looking at. We've we've currently got our uh, UTV down at the auction in Boise. We purchased it, I want to say for 4,700, I believe, from the county. And if I remember right, and currently down at the auction, it's up to 65 today, as of today. Yes. Yeah, so we've still got till the fifth, sale ends on the 15th of March on that. It's up to $6,500. Uh, 10 and a half percent of the sales price is the fees for doing it. Okay? And we will not receive payment on that till the 25th. So just to keep you up to date where our old unit is. So we're looking at at two new Can-Am uh, a Can-Am Defender or a Polaris Ranger XP Crew Cab. And I'll pass these around in just a minute because we've been soliciting bids and whatnot because we didn't know quite how the process would work and whatnot with the the funding. So we've been soliciting bids. We've got one bid for the Polaris from Carl's. Yeah, with our specs for $32,884. Uh, Dennis Dillon and Mile High Power Sports. Mile High Power Sports, of course, being a local dealership and whatnot. Uh, the Dennis Dillon one come come in for the Can-Am at 3166210. The Mile High one for the Can-Am come in at 2742092. So quite a difference. So I'll just kind of pass. So anyway, kind of quite a difference. But anyway, what I wanted to say is we, what we are trying to do at Search and Rescue is we've got some funding coming. Kind of a long story. I'll try and keep it short. We got some funding coming from the McCall Lot Tax Grant for $10,000. And $2,000 from Donley City Lot Tax Grant this year to purchase a trailer. Okay, this enclosed trailer is going to house all of our UTVs and ATVs. Because we got an ATV, we got half the money from you guys from a few years back and whatnot. But we we need someplace to house them. So we've got, we got, we're going to purchase this closed trailer to house everything out of the weather. Okay, so we don't know how much of the funds we're going to need from the sale of the UTV to purchase this trailer because the bids we're seeing on the trailer currently are are anywhere from 12 to 17,000 dollars. Okay, so with that being said, we're willing to put some money in towards this. We just don't know what that funding point would be yet to do something.
So what are you, 10,000 from McCall, that's going towards the trailer?
Trailer. Yeah, we've got that earmarked for a trailer. And another 2,000 from from city. So we got 12,000 going toward the trailer for this year. Towards the end of the year.
Didn't you guys take the old trailer from the sheriff?
We've got the old command trailer.
What are you gonna do with that?
We use the command trailer currently for a command trailer. We've got all our
So you're gonna keep that?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it won't go anywhere. It'll still stay. We're just looking for something to house our basically house our our moving stock in to move it to the search area. And then after we get to the search area, it's going to kind of become our uh, meeting room or room for people to get geared up, ready to go out and stuff like that is what we're looking for, the trailer for. We currently have an agreement with the McCall Donley School District to use a building up there that's a lean to, to house and park our equipment in and whatnot. So we've got our our old truck and trailer with the ATV on it now up there is where it's housed. We have the command trailer with our new truck in my shop because we have to keep it warm and and so the snow doesn't get on it and stuff like that. So it's ready to go at any time. But in the summertime, it will be up there to the to the bus barn, basically.
Larry, does the school charge you for storing that at the school?
No, they do not. They do not charge us. We're the only thing, part of our deal with them is we need power to plug that command trailer in to keep it, you know, somewhat warm. And so we have to pay for the power upgrade on that.
But as far as this UTV, you guys don't have any funds for that?
We don't have any funds at this point yet earmarked for this, for this UTV. So we'd be basically looking for the 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 minimum bid. It's like you say, it's 27,42092. We did keep our
Three funds again. So these, this is a funding mechanism that is to be used on the forest service?
Hmm, search and, yep.
Again, you'd have to keep really good records?
Hmm, we had, yeah, that's what I'm saying. We have search reports for everything that we go on, where it's at and whatnot that we'd be, have no problem with turning over. And we kept the tracks or for off their other one to put onto this one. So that wouldn't be an additional purchase at all. We've we've still got that so we can go over snow.
And that was the blurs that you took them off?
Correct.
So I'm assuming they didn't only go on the blurs?
No, you can, you, we have to, we'll have to get a, we'll have to get a kit. And that's the one thing we're looking at is we'll, we're willing to go for the kit to change it over from one machine to another machine. That'll be out of our our pocket as all, as well as sticker in this one up basically to identify it as a Valley County Search and Rescue rig would come from us.
I think it's appropriate use of those funds. We've got funding available. We have to have good equipment for these guys. We're asking them to go into really difficult situations and you don't want to have to go rescue the rescue guys.
I was gonna say, based on the use of force, I would say you're increasing your your equipment.
Yeah, that's that's what we're looking at, commissioners.
Did you guys ask them about the government discount price?
We have, we use, you know, it's like you say, we we proposed to them, you know, it's Valley County Search and Rescue and and you know, whatever discounts that and each manufacturer has and states and whatnot. And that's what I'm saying. I mean, Mile High really went above and beyond for us. Dennis Dillon, I mean, they've still tacked on some things and stuff like that, which we can see quite a difference in. But I mean, we get approached by all of them all the time, you know, come see us when you get ready and stuff. And it's like it's quite a difference too. So.
Much pleasure.
I appreciate it. It's appropriate use of funds. It's what they're there for.
Yep.
I would, uh, you know, I buy it towards the local vendor, but they're all good shops.
Hmm.
Well, I think it's kind of based, both your local doctors, you can fix it.
Yeah, that's what I say. We definitely want him on our side. No.
That's another few of us.
That's right.
I mean, that we approve the request from the Valley County Search and Rescue to utilize Title III funds to purchase uh, some equipment.
You want to specify the blurs?
Yeah, the UTV.
A Can-Am.
That's a Can-Am.
Yeah, Can-Am from Mile High Power Sports.
Okay, and that's the one you're gonna go with for certain. So a Can-Am from Mile High Power Sports.
Total on that was 27,420.
And 92 cents, yep.
Thank you for the addition of your motion. I didn't write it down.
Move your second. Any more discussion? Larry, you've had two live actors, man. What else you want to say? You're a good guy. You're a good guy. That's all you need right there.
Thank you very much, commissioners.
Move your second. All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, good luck.
You're out of here.
Hey folks, this is the last thing on our agenda today. So if anybody else has anything, just meaning it's adjourned. See everybody next week.
You guys need to get together and figure out who's gonna